We have 12. Morning, everybody. Welcome to the May 21st County Lebanon County Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will become public record. For anybody wishing to comment, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And when the chairman allows, you'll be brought in. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Robert. Thank you. All and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for May 21st. We'll begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Will now rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the part of the agenda which asks for public comment.
Just a reminder, anybody wishing to comment, please use the raise your hand function. This time there are 14 attendees and no raised hands.
All right, then we'll go to the approval of the minutes of our previous for an adoption of those.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered. We'll go on to our treasurer's report. We have Sally Nguyen on board.
Okay. We had receipts on May the 20th of $245,500, no, $245,530.36. We have a total cash of $8,098,881.74. We had expenditures this week of $1,052,510.72. Our tax claim is $166,425.78, meaning as a balance of $6,879,79,945.24. So, and as you saw on the paperwork, we did put set money aside for debt service and payrolls.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions or comments regarding the motion?
I could just, just to make a quick comment alluding to what Sally mentioned about the set aside. So the debt service, let's do on October 15th has already been set aside. And we have $680,000 toward the annual required contribution to the pension fund, which is a carryover from last year since last year's ARC was less than expected. And then other payrolls are covered up to the end of August as of now. So as receipts still come in and some of the balance that she still has, we'll keep on, we'll keep on setting aside.
Excellent. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Okay, we'll move on to Michelle Idris, our HR. Maven.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Moving on to personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Jessica Heverling, caseworker two, termination effective May 20th. Michael Wieland Jr., full-time correctional officer, termination effective May 11th. John Bayney, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective May 11th. Juana Torres, part-time DJ clerk, termination effective May 19th. Stephanie Cutler, Secretary B, resignation effective May 22nd. And Lynette Smith, clerk typist A, resignation effective May 29th.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Now second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Paul Knights, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison. This is a one-time payment in the amount of $1,250, and that will be effective June 4th.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that salary board request. Any questions, comments? Hearing none at all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? No order.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have Mr. Michael Anderson in the queue?
We do. I'll bring him in right now.
Good morning, Michael Anderson, Chief for voter registration.
Morning, Michael. Mr. Commissioner, would you like to preside?
Is this election board, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now I'd like to call the Board of Elections to order. Go ahead.
Okay, today I would like to request approval to publish the notice of the general primary election in the two daily newspapers as required in the election code. I would like to publish those in the Lebanon Daily News and the Sun, which covers the Palmarra area. And in that notice, it does have the Democratic and Republican ballot individuals on. Some general voter information and also the, all of the 60 polling locations for this primary. I would like to note that there are seven changes from the special election to this election. Four of those being permanent changes that were approved previously by the board. And then three temporary changes due to COVID-19 and having to find locations. The public notice if approved, not only not running in the newspapers, but also be on our website. And I already do have the 60 polling locations on the website as well. So I do request the board approval to proceed.
I'll make a motion to approve the primary election public notice as presented to be in the Lebanon Daily News and the Hummelstown Sun.
I'll second the motion. I have a question, Bill.
Sure, go ahead.
Michael, you, maybe I missed it when you were presenting there. Do you know which day, because the Sun is only published, I believe, once a week, maybe. It's not a daily. Do you know what day they will be published in those papers?
I, so I believe it's Thursdays for the Sun. Don't quote me. I know my deadline is tomorrow to get it to them. I believe it's.
Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday. Thank you, Wednesday. And I was probably going to do the same exact date for the Lebanon Daily News, depending on their deadlines. But I'll usually try to keep them around a day or two of each other.
Just so people can get an idea when they should be looking for it. Okay, thank you. That was all.
I do have one raised hand when you permit.
Sure, we can do that now. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners and Michael. It's Laura LeBeau from WLBR and WQIC. I'm sorry, WFVY, new call letters. Froggy in the Valley. Michael, can you tell me how it's been going in terms of recruitment of poll workers? I've seen the ads.
Sure, Laura. The recruitment actually has gone pretty well. We've been, we've been happy with the response from the community, from, from the ads and the merchandisers where we put those. And then also just the public notice in these meetings and requesting assistance. So overall, we've been happy with that response. Obviously, we had a lot of poll workers that we had to replace. And so as of this time, we're, we're good. But we, we're still taking names. We're putting them on a list. It kind of what we're doing now is, is, you know, as we hear that we need some replacements, we have names for judges to call and have those replacements. So that's good. So at this point, we're, we're pretty pleased with the result and from the community. But if somebody is interested, please contact our office. We will take their information. Kind of working on a last second list that may be on call for people on Election Day that if we end up having places where we need somebody, then we can fill them in.
And if I may, just one follow-up also, and this might be maybe something for Solicitor Warner or Commissioners. But I've also seen some commentary from State Representative Russ Diamond vis a vis the wearing of masks on Election Day at the precincts. And he is publishing on Facebook that people do not need to wear masks. And I'm just wondering if, if any of you can comment, is there, you know, any requirement to wear masks? I know the workers will, but for the voters who show up?
I can start if they don't mind. So we are highly encouraging everybody to wear a mask that goes to vote. I will not take away somebody's right to vote that does not wear a mask at the polling location. But one of the things, Laura, that you need to remember is my mask protects you, your mask protects me. And I, and I really would like the, the public to understand the importance of that and the fact that these people, these poll workers are there to service their community. And we are going to do everything in our power to make them safe. And part of what the community can do is, is to wear a mask. And to wear a mask for the period of time it takes you to vote, I don't think is, is that much to ask. And so I implore people to please do that. And, you know, but I'm not going to take someone's right away to vote if they don't wear a mask. But, you know, there's going to be good judgment made by the judges as far as how they, they keep their people safe. And so they're going to definitely do that. And, but that answers your question, I guess. I just, I implore people to wear a mask. No, it's not going to be a requirement because we're not going to, I'm not going to subject the board to some type of legal action that we're going to take away somebody's right to vote because they don't have a mask on. Just, just please wear it. I, I understand there's political things back and forth. But this is just to, to keep our poll worker safe, please wear a mask for the period of time you're in the polling location. And that's what I ask. That, that's my personal request.
I, I would like to add to that, that we, on Friday, when we made the decision that we did to, to go from red to yellow, we also indicated that we were anticipating that everyone would, would follow the, the CDC guidelines, wearing masks, distancing, and so on. So I personally, I, I have no idea why Russ Diamond is doing that. But I, I can't see a political reason even to do it. So I, I personally am encouraging, as, as you are, Michael, that everyone that goes in to vote for, you know, five minutes or 10 minutes or whatever it takes to, just to wear a mask.
We also have a few masks available. Should someone forget theirs and want to wear one?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. So Commissioner Litz and some of the ladies, and I'm not sure if you have a group name or not, if we did.
Women working behind the scenes.
Okay, so I do have some masks. If you do forget, we will have some at the precinct that you can, you can take with you then. But, you know, please, you know, try to remember yours. We only have so many, but we do have, we will have some there.
But, but purely from the standpoint of the law, a, a person cannot be prohibited from entry into the polling place if they are, are really adamant about not wearing a mask?
No, we're not going to deny them. Dave, you and I haven't talked about it, but at this point, I, I don't think that's a, that's a winning argument. So, you know, if they don't, they choose not to wear one, they'll, they'll still have the right to vote. It might be a little bit different. We're, they're going to vote, but we're going to probably try to keep contact as, as much as is possible to a minimum for somebody that, that doesn't want to wear a mask, that's, that to the judge, as long as they do not refuse them the right to vote.
Yeah, and, and I would agree with that. I don't believe we're in a position to take a legal stance on that, to deny someone the right to vote based upon the current levels of recommendation for masks. And I don't think we want to get into that situation on Election Day. Obviously, as everyone knows, there's, there's mail-in voting options that are more broad and liberal this year to allow access to that. There's other ways people can do it if they don't feel comfortable coming to the polls that day. Certainly understandable. But as far as at the polls that day, I think we'll probably have signage up. We might have a gentle recommendation or reminder at the polls. But otherwise, again, we're going to allow people to, to still access their right to vote.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions or discussions? We have a motion on the floor to approve the advertisement of the election. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries and you can advertise, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you don't mind, can I have just a couple of seconds here just to go over a couple of deadlines that are upcoming?
Absolutely.
Thank you. First, on Tuesday, May 26th, 5 o'clock is the deadline for applications for mail-in and absentee ballots. If that is the way that you want to vote, please get those in now. We are going to do our very best to get those turned around as soon as possible. When we get those applications, we get those ballots out. But those ballots are due back here, June 2nd by 8:00 PM, so Election Day. And so the turnaround is, is not a lot. And so please, if, if you haven't already, get those applications in. Postmarks do not matter. They have to be here in the office by 5:00 o'clock. If you have already applied, don't reapply. We have it. We will get you your ballot. We have had an overwhelming number of applications come in in the last day or so. We will, we, we are getting those out. We have people in here. We're working. Those ballots will get out to you very, very shortly. So just a little bit of patience with that, just because of the sheer number that we've gotten in the last, I would say, day or so. But those ballots will get, get out to you. And please, if you do have your ballot, get that returned as soon as possible. Don't wait to do that. Get that into us as well, because we don't want you to miss out. That does have to be in the office, like I said, June 2nd by 8:00 PM. Postmarks do not matter for either the application or the ballot itself.
You have an estimate of the number of ballots that you've received, Michael? Or requests?
Yeah. So at this point, requests, 13,275. Just ran it. And so received, we're over 4,000 received, but I can tell you, I probably have a good 500, 600 back there to scan. And so those will get scanned in. Our priority is then to process applications and get ballots in the mail first, and then to scan in the ballots received second. Just because it's important as far as getting the ballots to people as opposed to making sure the ballot is, is, I mean, it's already received. It's just being marked in the system. So that will occur. It's just the priority right now is to get the turnaround as fast as possible.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ames, before you adjourn, may I just add in something?
Absolutely.
I know I've mentioned this before, but I, I need to shine a big light on that office that Michael is director of. If, and I know there are other departments that are coming, extra work and so on. But this is a, has been a couple of months of first in, last out of that department, working weekends. They're here. You come in at 7:00, they're here. And plus there are volunteers and, and other departments that have chipped in to help them. So this has been a big effort. His demeanor is very calm, but I'm sure his mind is racing because there, you know, the deadline's approaching. But Michael, I, I really, we are very grateful for the, your conduct and how you've been managing through this election. Thank you.
We love you, Michael. Thank you.
That's very, very good.
You know, I have to, my staff has been here right beside me the whole time. So it's just not me. It is, you know, Joellen, Joe, as we call her here in our office, Judy, Audrey. And then all the, the people here coming in to help us have been wonderful. So we appreciate that very much.
Well, we appreciate all you do, Michael. Thank you very much. All right, anything else to come before the Board of Elections? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll reconvene our public meeting and go to our next agenda item, which looks like, if I'm correct, Stiefel.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many of them we have on here yet. Let's, let's take a quick look. We're about eight minutes ahead of them.
Got one coming in.
They're a group.
Nice. Nice family shot.
Look at that.
Jamie, do you see CS McKee on there as well?
Yep, yep, Jeff just, Jeff just raised his hand. So Jeff Davidak's there as well.
Okay, are we?
Is Jeff, is Mark with you or is, morning?
You're on mute.
You're muted yet.
Jeff, you're on mute.
Sorry about that.
That's better, that's better.
And Mark and Harish, if they haven't already joined, should be joining shortly.
Okay.
Very good. Well, we can proceed if we want to, but Mike and.
Sure, sure. We'll get started here. So thanks for allowing us to, to join your meeting today. Just to kind of give introductions again, myself, my name is Brett Holland. Sonya Gross is here. I'm not sure whether it's to my right or to my left, but you're viewing there. Sonya Gross is part of our team and Mike Dattastelli as well. And then from CS McKee today, we have Jeff Davidak, who's Senior Vice President. You guys know Jeff very well. Harish Ayar, which is going to be the healthcare portfolio manager, going to weigh in a little bit on the COVID, which might be an interesting topic for a few minutes. And then Mark Gishmeyer, who's the president of CS McKee, who will be joining us here shortly. So we want to just do kind of our typical thing where we give an update. So on this report that you all should have received, probably hard to see. But if you can go to page one, like we typically do, we just want to review some of the numbers there. And this is through the end of the quarter, so through the end of March 31st. And then Mike, as usual, have updated numbers through yesterday. The combined portfolio for the quarter there in the top left-hand side in the bar chart is for the first quarter was down negative 14.58% starting in January, going through the end of March. And you can see over the one-year number, just to kind of give a little longer perspective, was down 5.81% for the one-year number. And then obviously, further numbers that go out to the right there. Just to kind of give a little perspective, we had obviously a very difficult, everyone knows what's going on with COVID-19, had a very difficult first quarter. And Michael Sherwood, we got a little bit of a bounce back here in the last 60 days or so. Some perspective, last year for 2019, the portfolio was up about 21.5%. So we've given back certainly some of those gains that we had last year. But again, Michael gives some updated numbers with where we're at through yesterday. So moving over to the right, the line chart that's over there, just talking about withdrawals and how much the portfolio actually depreciated during that time. Under the quarter numbers, you can see it was $132,583,000 at the beginning of the year, which would be January 1st of 2020. Contributions slash withdrawals as a withdrawals for retirees was $2.1 million. Next section down, appreciation or depreciation, obviously, we saw a loss in the first quarter of $19.1 million. And given the ending balance at the end of the quarter of $111,297,661. The one-year numbers to the right of that, you can see that I won't necessarily read that unless you all would like me to read that. Bottom left-hand side, something that we talk a lot about is allocation and risk. And just to kind of give an update on the allocation of the overall pension portfolio, the equities are showing at 61.35%. And we always try to extrapolate that and break that down. The equities or the actual stock portion of the portfolio is 57.27%. The REITs, which is that real estate investment trust portfolio, is 4.08. So if you add those two together, that's where that 61.35% comes from. Fixed income or your bonds are 33.87% and cash is 4.78% right now. We always, we're not going to get into this time because we have quite a few folks to speak, actually. But the risk reward statistics that we look at for the portfolio are actually very good. I know the numbers, the performance numbers are bad right now for this first quarter of this year are not positive. But the amount of risk that the managers are taking on to try to get the returns and try to minimize losses are actually in a positive direction. So with that, I'll ask Mike to kind of give an update through yesterday, unless you have any questions about the report, any questions at all?
No, it's not as bad as I thought it would be. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Go ahead. Okay. So yes, through yesterday's performance on the markets, the, the current balance on the pension plan is $120,203,674. And that actually makes our return, again, this is un-audited through yesterday, it shows that we're down 6.97%. So we've had a nice little bounce back here. Sometimes there's a bear market rally, and I think that's what we probably saw in April and beginning in March, or May, rather. And so hopefully, you know, we'll continue to see some improvement. But that typically happens after we've seen a bear market where there's a significant downturn. And then usually there's some type of bear market rally. And again, I think that's probably what we've seen. Markets have calmed down, acting a lot more rational. Certainly in, in March, there was irrational selling and that put a lot of stress on the credit markets. And, and all, all asset classes were hit as a result of that as well. But again, things seem to have calmed down quite a bit. Allocation-wise, we're pretty much the same allocation as we were at the end of the first quarter. Equities did, did rally a little bit, so our equities are right up against our investment policy statement limit, which is 60%. But at this point, we're certainly not going to, going to make any, any allocation changes at this point. Any questions with, with the updated numbers?
Michael, would you mind repeating today's number? Was it 102 or 120 million?
All right, it's 120.
120. Okay, that's really good. Thank you.
Mike, could you recap? There were some slight allocation changes just to, just to get to a little more of a cash, I guess, a cash investor that was putting some of that back in the market, if you could just recap that.
Yes, I was going to bring that up, Jamie. I appreciate you mentioning that. We have, our office here has continued to contact Jamie and Bob pretty much on a weekly basis throughout, you know, since, since the market's downturn, just to keep everybody up to date, you know, what's been going on with the pension plan and so on. And the end of April, we had a conversation with Jamie. Our team here had decided to shift some monies within the equity managers. So we took some money out of CS McKee Equity and Confluence. And we moved those funds over to Legg Mason and Washington Crossing Advisors. And we just felt like these, those two managers might have a little bit more bounce. Legg Mason has a little bit more technology in there, and that seems to be an area that market has been responding quite favorably. And then Washington Crossing, as Jamie was alluding to, they're our all-cap value manager. And at the end of 2019, they actually were about 25% in cash. Certainly not knowing what was in front of them, but they just, the, the stock market was pretty highly priced. And they just couldn't find value in their portfolio and the stocks that they wanted to invest in. So that's. so that's what they tend to do is raise cash, if they can't find good value, it could step in points with certain stocks. And that proved for them, that proved to be very good, because they were sitting on that cash when the market came down in the last 60 days, they actually got that money back to work and bought things at a much better price, so. That's just one example Brett mentioned about the risk statistics and how our managers, who've been the whole portfolio, not just Washington Crossing, those are some of the strategies that they take and the thought process that goes into making the decisions, especially in a time like this. So for Washington Crossing, it was just a little bit of good fortune, they stayed true to their principle, didn't overpay for certain stocks, and the market, when it came down, they benefited from it. So those did happen, and I think, you know, that's led a little bit to some of the recovery, along with the markets moving the way they have. The other thing, you know, for the, for the board, I guess the other question we have is, I know historically, usually at the end of May, beginning of June, at least for the last quite a few years, you have made your ARC payments. And we're at a position right now, we usually keep a fair amount of cash for the monthly distributions for the pensionees, and we'd be probably looking at raising some cash, needing to raise some cash for the next few months, but we didn't want to necessarily have to do that, if there's anticipation of that ARC payment coming in, and if so, when that might be, we would use that cash then, as opposed to going out and raising cash with money managers.
Is that a question for now?
It is, yeah. If you don't have any, that's fine, we'll manage it, but.
Be a little more specific on the timing, Mike, what, when exactly are you thinking, the next few months?
Um, yeah, we're probably going to meet in June to raise money for that distribution.
Okay. We didn't set aside the ARC yet, but we do have some cash on the balance, Sally, that we could use as a set aside, and if that would be more beneficial, rather than you having to sell, sell off equities, we could go ahead and make that ARC. I think we've made it that early in the past, and we've done it that part of the year anyway, so.
Yeah, I think it's a little over 700,000 is what we're, what we're taking out on a monthly basis, is that, is that pretty accurate?
Bob Metley, is that what they usually need, 700?
What's that? What's the?
Month, yes, 700 a month.
Bob's like.
I guess, is there, is there any reason we couldn't split up the ARC, if we want to just?
You know, I, I don't see any reason we couldn't, I can ask the actuary that, but I think as long as we pay it all in the year, we're good. And concerning that, I'm going to pass some stuff around, they have some recommendations to do some things that we'll have to look at for the next meeting. What it's going to basically do is make the ARC about what we budgeted it for.
Okay. It's a change, so knowing that they'll need some cash for June, knowing that we're still, I think it's fair to say, without speaking on behalf of the whole board, I think it's fair to say that we're a little uncertain here on just where cash is going to be, or where finances are going to be in the coming months, so maybe we could do a partial ARC, certainly have the entire commitment, but just do a partial ARC to avoid having to sell off some of the, some of the equities to make the cash.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see there being a problem with that, I think some counties do it that way, so I'll reaffirm that today, but I'm almost 100% sure we can.
Okay.
I think that is the ask, that we make sure we pay all of it, that's.
Yep, yep.
All right, Michael.
All right, so keep that in mind, at this point, I'll turn it over to Jeff Davidak and Mark Gensheimer from CS McKee, and so, go ahead, gentlemen.
Great, I want to thank everybody for having us here, it's been a true privilege working with all of you at the county over the years, and as Brett and Mike may have communicated to you, I'm actually retiring from CS McKee to work on a tech venture at Carnegie Mellon, but Mark Gensheimer, the President of our firm, somebody who many of you know well through the different organizations that he's been committed to over the years, and county government and state government, and can't think of a better person for you to be working with as I kind of move on to this next step. I also have with me on the call today, Dr. Harish Ayr, who is our healthcare and biotech expert, and we thought that it might be of interest to all of you on board, and also to the public joining, to hear some of his perspectives on COVID and the impact that it's having on the markets and the economy. I'll begin with a couple of quick highlights and a key portion of the fund, and then I'll turn it over to Harish and Mark to give you their thoughts. But as Mike and Brett had mentioned, and as you're undoubtedly aware, it's been a very difficult start to the year for the markets and the economy. The jobless claims, which we tend to think of on a monthly basis as hovering around 200,000 or so, have spiked upwards into the millions, and there are some reports coming out over the next week that will provide more color to just how deep the economic setback of coronavirus has been. That being said, the county's investments with McKee have held up pretty well. The total for the year-to-date is minus 4.24%, which, all things considered, is actually not, not too bad. I can remember meetings with pension funds like the county's back in 2009, when portfolios were down 25%, some, some places, not here in Lebanon, but other places, there were plans that were down 35%. So, all things considered, the portfolio has held up pretty well. We've had some bright spots in technology, energy has been the area that's been hit the hardest in the portfolio, and we had a little bit of an overweight to the energy sector prior to COVID-19, so that had some impact on fun. But technology has been a bright spot, and going into the second quarter, since March 31st, the equity portion of your fund with CS McKee is up 11.89% versus 10.81% for the benchmark. So those are some pretty nice positive returns coming off the end of, of last quarter. The bond portfolio did what it was supposed to do, it held value and actually generated income during the sharp drop-off during the first quarter, and for the year-to-date, the bond portfolio is up 2.82%, so it's provided some stability and liquidity for the county retirement fund. And I know that Brett and Mike and I have had numerous conversations over the years about the importance of making sure that there would always be liquidity and some stable and diversifying component of your fund precisely for situations like this, so it's good to see that that asset allocation plan is working as it should. With that, I'll turn things over to Harish and Mark, happy to answer any questions that any of you have at any time in the presentation.
Wish you well in your future endeavors, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
It's good to, this is Mark, it's great to see everybody here, and it'll be real privileged to work a little bit more closely with you again, I did for my first five years at McKee, so I'm really looking forward to that. And I really am going to miss you, Jeff, I'm really excited for you and for your family, I know it's going to be great not spending three or four nights a week on the road, and, and I know this new venture at, with Carnegie Mellon is going to work out really, really well, but. So Jeff just asked me to make a few comments on, on our outlook for, for the economy and the markets, which is probably the most difficult thing I've ever been asked to do in my, you know, 35, 37 years in this business, and certainly my 15 years at McKee, because frankly, it's, it's pretty difficult to give you much of a predictable outlook at this point. You know, like Jamie, like you were saying before, you know, trying to figure out what to do with, with your ARC, you know, just so much has happened in the last 10 weeks to our economy, and it's certainly been unprecedented. You know, fortunately, for our economy and our financial system, it's much healthier than it was the last time that we went into any kind of a crisis, much healthier on the front end of this, thank goodness. You know, we continue to have a tremendous amount of confidence in corporate America, and believe that once we're permitted to get back to work, which looks like it's coming here pretty soon, we believe that things are going to start to improve. On the other hand, with unemployment over 20%, you know, it's difficult to predict how much turbulence there's going to be when we kickstart the, the economy. You know, with interest rates as low as they are, we don't think that the stock market is too terribly overvalued. While we don't expect a sharp V-shaped recovery, you know, since it appears that we have at least learned how to treat this virus, and we have it somewhat under control, and that we're not in the middle of flu season, we're expecting kind of a, to recover slowly but surely. We certainly need to expect continued volatility in all segments of the market. You know, our expectations, I think similar to Mark's and the folks at Stiefel, are that technology will be one of the stronger sectors, as well as some areas of healthcare. But as usual, we're going to continue to focus on those companies that are financially strong and expect continued good, strong cash flows. But since we're privileged to have Harish with us, you know, he's, he's our healthcare portfolio manager, knows a tremendous amount about, you know, the healthcare world, and recently wrote a little article on COVID-19 and a path forward, and we've been having him talk to several of our public clients, particularly those, because we know what a difficult position all of you are in. You know, everybody in your county are looking to you to, to help them with decisions, and we just thought it'd be really helpful for Harish to make a few comments, particularly on the virus, what he sees out there, and, and then also in healthcare in general, and maybe if you have any other questions on the portfolio, he's familiar with all the securities in the portfolio, so unless there are any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Harish.
Thank you, Mark.
Yours, yes. Okay.
You're on mute, Harish.
Is that better? Sorry about that. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Jeff. As Mark mentioned, I, Harish Ayr, I cover healthcare for McKee. I'll, just for this morning, I'll briefly go over kind of our portfolio, kind of where we stand, and then kind of dig a little bit deeper into just my thoughts on COVID, where we are, kind of where I think we are headed, and just some general comments afterwards. And again, if you have any questions, please, please don't hesitate to, to ask. Just first on the portfolio, as Mark mentioned, you know, healthcare is one of the bright spots, certainly in the first quarter and even, even the second quarter to date. And that's, you know, healthcare is generally a defensive space to begin with, and certainly with all the turmoil and the upheaval in the general market, it certainly helped. And also aside, I know we do have an election, although that's kind of taken a backseat to a lot of the stuff. You know, I think some changes on the election side also helped the space. It has been an overhang on the space for years, and at least those kind of concerns have kind of put the back burner, which has, again, helped broad sentiment with healthcare names in general. Normally, in mid-May of any given year, I would be looking at abstracts for the ASCO, so that clinical oncology meeting, and that's usually held in June. This year, it's obviously a virtual meeting, so it's going to be a little bizarre, a little strange, and frankly, I spend most of my time looking at stuff regarding COVID. And on that front, as Mark mentioned, I did write a short article, just looking at, you know, again, what I'm seeing. You know, I think all of us get inundated with information from whether it be news, print, et cetera. I find it very troubling in the sense that a lot of the information that we do see is, it kind of contradicts, you know, each, each fact kind of contradicts itself, and it's very troubling or puzzling to kind of figure out what actually is going on. And my effort was to try to put it in a kind of concise three-pager that anybody can kind of walk away with and kind of get a handle on what's, what's going on. Obviously, it's a very fluid situation. So if we look at where we were and where we are, I think we're in a much better place. For one thing, and I think the biggest takeaway from anything is, I think we know what to do with this disease now, which we did not know 30 days ago, 60 days ago, et cetera, and I think, and that makes a world of difference. Just how do you treat somebody who presents with, with these indications? And second, we have a treatment. It's not a panacea, it's not perfect, but you know, as you're aware, Gilead's drug Remdesivir was approved for emergency use, I think, two weeks ago. And, you know, again, as with any antiviral, you need to give it early, if you can imagine, you know, if you've ever gotten the flu, you know, Tamiflu works, but it only works if you take it within the first couple of days of having flu. So there is a path forward, we have a treatment, we know how to deal with it much better than, than we did in the past. And then the next step is obviously, there is a vaccine, and there is tremendous work in that front. Certainly, there was a lot of buzz late Friday over the weekend and this Monday on Moderna. It's a small cap company that's developing a new vaccine technology, or using a new vaccine technology. It's still very, very early, and you know, any drug trial usually takes a very long time, lots of patients, lots of data. I think in, in the crisis that we're in, all of that has been expedited into, you know, weeks, and it's really hard to kind of figure out what's going on, given that expedited timeframe. But again, the data is promising, we still have to kind of wait and see. Personally, I don't think we have a vaccine, if at all, by this year, I just think it's kind of very difficult. Yet, remember, a vaccine, beyond anything else, has to do no harm. You're going to be giving this to lots and lots of people, just to put it in perspective, a flu vaccine in this country usually is administered to about 170 million people. If you're looking at something like for COVID, you're looking well north of that. And again, it has to do no harm, it has to be effective enough to prevent the disease, but it cannot do harm particularly to the most vulnerable, so those who are elderly or immunocompromised. And the data on that is still, still out, it's early. But again, you know, there is hope, you have a dozen-plus companies working on vaccines that are in trials today. The government has been very forthcoming as far as putting dollars to this effort, both on developing a vaccine and also on the, on the manufacturing front. Even just this morning, I think in a partnership with AstraZeneca, the government, the federal government essentially set aside a one and a half, 1.2 billion dollars in a manufacturing kind of a ramp-up to, once a vaccine is produced, to get it out there. Again, we're going to need not just 100 million doses, we're going to need in the, in the billions of doses. So manufacturing is a critical step, which, you know, once we have a vaccine, is, is certainly something we'll have to tackle. But, you know, again, it seems like every day we have more and more information, and that's a good thing. I think the worst thing, I think in anything, not, not just in this, is to a lack of information, and the fact that we are learning more and more about this virus every day is, is a positive. I know, and on the, I'm on the eastern end of the state, closer, closer to Lebanon, I'm actually, I've been to Lebanon County quite a bit, just for baseball, both my boys play quite a lot, and we're very familiar with Palmyra and Hershey and et cetera. But, you know, we're still on lockdown, hopefully, things are kind of opening up, and I think, again, the warm weather helps with any virus. I'll stop there, and, you know, I'm happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Yes, thank you, Harish. My understanding of this virus and others is that it constantly evolves and morphs. So how can a vaccine that is developed for this virus protect us from a comeback that might be different?
That's a great question, so you're correct, viruses generally mutate. So you can imagine, if we look at the flu, for example, the flu mutates constantly, and therefore, we have to develop multiple vaccines on an annual basis. So a flu shot from last year will not generally work this year, and so forth. So the coronavirus is a little different, so it is. So it is unlike the flu virus. It's a very different virus and we actually don't know if it will mutate or not. It's too early. So coronavirus, it's basically the common cold. So a very severe form of the common cold. But it's really too early to tell. As far as we know so far, at least this year, it appears that it has not mutated to the effect that any vaccines or anything will not work. But on a, so that's one point. On a secondary side, it's how a vaccine targets the virus. So if you look at a coronavirus there, or if you look at any virus in general, you can attack it through multiple angles. So whether, how the, so how does a virus work in a body? It gets into your body and it replicates. So it kind of copies itself over and over and over again and essentially overwhelms your body, your health system, your immune system. So it's how you attack that replication. So there are some things in a virus that mutate and there are some things in a virus that don't mutate. So if a vaccine is targeted at some, one of those parts that do not mutate, then, you know, it has some staying power, it has some longevity and could last, you know, more than one season or one year. So, but it's a great question. Unfortunately, we don't know. So one step at a time, I guess.
Thank you.
I did have one, just, I know you've covered this, but I may have gotten the number wrong. The average, I'm sorry, the annual flu vaccines in a typical year, was it 100 and how many million?
About, in the U.S., it's, I think this is about 160. Just about, roughly half the population gets a flu shot. And on any typical year, about 60, 70 million people actually contract the flu. So it's, there is not a good statistic on how many of those 60 million who contracted the flu actually had the flu shot. So that's, because again, as with the vaccine, just because you get the vaccine does not mean that you will, you know, not are prevented from getting it.
All right, Harish, thank you very much. Anything else from our commissioners or any questions? If not, Jeff, good luck with Carnegie Mellon. I'm sure that'll be exciting for you and your new chapter. And we appreciate all you've done with us over the past years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Folks, thank you.
Thank you all.
Give me just a minute.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, next up we have Dan Lyons and I think he also has Matthew Padron from HDC, which we'll bring into the meeting here if you're ready.
Yes, yep.
Oops, hang on. Sorry, Chris, wrong person.
Chris, you're on mute if you're trying to get in.
He wasn't, that was my fault.
Can you hear me, Jamie? Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, this is Dan Lyons with the Redevelopment Authority.
Perfect.
I don't have a webcam, so I'm just dialing in with my telephone. I hope that's okay.
That's fine. Yep, you may go ahead.
We wanted to see your beard.
I think it's better that you don't.
Dan, we've got Matthew on as well.
Good morning, everybody.
Okay, Jamie, would you like us to do the HDC business first then?
Mr. Chairman, is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Okay, Matthew, you can go ahead and introduce your business.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, wonderful. Thank you very much for your time this morning. We are grateful for the county's continued support for our D.C.R. project. As a very brief update, we've had a very good performance of making progress, received funding, allocation of tax credits from PHB last year, worked through the land development process, had great experience with North Temple Township through that process, received additional approval back in March for our land development plan and have been working towards closing since then. The reason we've requested to speak with you today is regarding the $500,000 commitment of Act 137 funds for the project. Due in part two, COVID-19 and the many delays obviously we've seen, being able to process things, work through things. We're basically facing a small timing delay in terms of our final closing and our ability to acquire the site. Our site control expires at the end of this month, May 31st. However, due to, again, some delays in processing and working through things, particularly as the virus came chugging down, we are anticipating that the funding that would be available to take on the site, that we were potentially originally intending to use the equity funding through the project, will not become available until June, early June at this point, basically partially due to that. And so we are asking here if we would be able to utilize the Act 137 fund that was awarded to acquire the site and basically cover the site acquisition cost and the associated cost of acquisition, namely the transfer taxes and legal processing costs as part of this project. Regarding our plans going forward after that, we have worked with our investors from PHB to ensure that we have good push built into our construction plan and the rest of our development plan to deal with COVID-19 and further delays. So we've extended our construction period to make sure we're able to maintain funding and complete the project. As, oh, thank you very much. Complete the project on the, on a schedule that will work too. So, you know, we're able to work through delays now that we understand the landscape that we're looking at further. But again, you know, we're still facing this kind of initial timing delay with the acquisition of the land. And so we would ask if we could use the soft loan that you guys approved, that we're very grateful for, for this acquisition.
Matthew, I'm looking at your letter. I do not see an amount that you are requesting.
So the total award for the $500,000, that's of course important. The acquisition price for the land is $458,000. That we'd be requesting for that along with associated transfer taxes and I can pull up the estimated amounts. It's a fairly small amount. Of approximately $4,580 and then some associated legal fees with processing the acquisition. So it'd be.
Could you give that number a little more slowly, a little more slowly?
My apologies, sorry. So the total acquisition price of the land is $458,000, that includes the acquisition price and then the extension fees that we paid to maintain our site control up until this date. So that's the total acquisition price. And then in addition to that, there would be a transfer tax of $4,580 and then a small associated legal cost for processing. The transaction, I don't have the exact amount there, but it's fairly small. So it would be fully covered by the total award amount, all those costs. And we'd have a bit left over after that, that would go towards construction as planned.
It might be helpful to just clarify, this is a, this is a, an amount or an allocation that you previously approved. And Matt's here to just ask for a different sequence in the timing of the, of the allocation. So typically it would be used toward the construction and so on, but because of the delays, you know, not, not losing control of the property, you must have closing by May 29th, I think, is that correct?
Yeah, our site control is through May 31st, but we're trying to close on May 29th.
So if it goes beyond that, then you may be back to square one and lose the whole, lose the whole thing.
Yeah.
So we're loaning you this money. What is the interest rate you're going to pay us on it?
So for soft loan and what we've been working with since the amount was awarded, for soft loan, usually we see on these either a 0% rate with deferred payments through the 30-year term of the loan and then full repayment either at the end of the loan term or at refinance, which in our case usually is around 15 years when we do rehabilitation effort, refinance that would provide opportunity to repay. In the cases where soft loans have interest rates, they're almost always a very nominal rate. Again, the purpose of which is to make sure the affordable housing project's not burdened and is able to maintain affordability for that time period. But it would remain an able loan, sorry, my apologies.
No, no, I thought you were done, I'm sorry. Our redevelopment authority certainly has to have some funding to pay their bills and do the handling, et cetera. And so it's not uncommon for us to charge 2% to 4% on these kinds of loans.
Not sure that that's.
We've already, we've already approved the terms, I think, in prior business of the board.
Yeah, we're just modifying the.
The timing.
Yeah, we're not requesting additional money at all.
I think they're seeking it at 0%. The, in terms of the redevelopment authority, I mean, the percentage that is charged on the soft loans, I believe, goes back into the fund, the Act 137 fund. Is that correct, Daniel?
That is correct.
How do you guys get paid for the handling, Dan?
We can charge our time directly to the Act 137 fund, that cost. That's typically how we would do that.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to accept a motion? Anything else for discussion?
I'll make a motion to abide by the new schedule that's necessary to make this project move forward.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, clarification needed? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your support and time. We're extremely grateful and we look forward to it.
Stay well, Matthew.
Okay, my item of business today, my first one is for the county community development program and it's concerning the county's citizen participation plan as it applies to our CDBG program and our home program. The CARES Act legislation provided a waiver for certain citizen participation requirements. And specifically what it allows is the, the use of virtual public hearings to meet our citizen participation requirements. So every year with our CDBG program, we hold an input public hearing where we request citizen comment on the CDBG program, on our past performance in the program and on our proposed use of funds. This CARES Act waiver would allow us to hold those public hearings virtually such as with Zoom, through a Zoom webinar or another teleconference. And it also allows us to condense the public comment period down to five days. And there are limitations on the, on this waiver. It only applies to the CARES Act allocation of CDBG funding and to the most recent two years of CDB, regular CDBG funding. And the limitations also require that the, that the social distancing restrictions be in place. In other words, once, once we're out of the woods with the social distancing and the coronavirus concerns, we will be required to go back to holding in-person public hearings with our, with our usual 10-day public comment period. This is just a temporary allowance due to the coronavirus situation, but to take advantage of it, we need to amend the county's citizen participation plan and basically just add a paragraph that references the CARE Act, the CARES Act waiver. That's what I'm requesting.
Seek a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend our contracts or whatever you want to call them from 10 days to five and to allow Zoom so that they can do public comment.
I'll second the motion.
Here we have a motion to second to amend the CARES Act language for a waiver as presented. Any further discussion or any clarification? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Now, the last item of business is the Boskov's Section 108 loan. And now this is a, this is an item of CDBG business because Boskov's received a loan that was secured by a number of local area counties' CDBG funding. So we, including Lebanon County. So Lebanon County pledged their, a portion of their future CDBG annual allocations as collateral for the Boskov's loan. And HUD reached out to Boskov's to offer some relief during the coronavirus troubles that they're having. And what they're offering is a deferment of the principal portion of their 2020 payment, which is due in August. So Boskov's makes annual payments on that loan and they are seeking a deferral of the principal portion of their 2020 payment. And HUD is willing to grant that deferral. But in order to do so, all the counties that pledge their CDBG as collateral must support the move. And they're asking Lebanon County, if you're in favor of that, to sign on to a letter that DCD has prepared that will be sent to HUD and allow them to, to grant that deferral.
Okay. We'll seek a motion and then we'll discuss it if we get a motion.
I'll make a motion that we agree to signing the letter granting the deferral in the principal payment.
I'll second the motion and I do have comments, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, you may go with your comments.
Surely. I was serving in 2009 when the original loan went through for Mr. Boskov. The seven counties other than Lebanon that were included were Schoolkill, Lackawanna, Snyder, Butler, Blair and Cambria. There were $2 million that we were allowed extra on top of the original $5 million loan so that we have been able to do everything locally, like anything from sidewalk, curb cuts and other handicap accessible projects. So it has benefited us greatly and at the time, we noted that Boskov's was our community mall and does so much for the community from the Boy Scouts, American Cancer Society and the list goes on. So all that being said, I think it's a reasonable request because it was a 20-year loan and we are in year 11, if I calculate correctly, of that 20-year loan, which means the remaining principal that would be avoided at this time would be spread over the remaining nine years. So it seems like a logical solution to help them stay afloat and it's something that HUD allows. So I'm very grateful that we still have Boskov's as our local retail outlet and I certainly am in favor of this particular motion.
Further comment? I am also encouraged that this came as a, as a information item from HUD, not from Boskov's, so that that actually adds another degree of strength in helping to make a decision along those lines. Anything else before we vote? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dan.
Dan, before you leave, I just have a question. Do you know where any of the other counties are in the process?
Yes, I do. As of Tuesday this week, Blair County, Butler County, Cambria County have all approved the deferral. Lackawanna County Commissioners are meeting on June 3rd to decide. And in addition to the, to the local counties, there's actually three direct HUD entitlements that are considering it as well. And of the three, Wilkes-Barre has approved it and that leaves Scranton, Vineland, New Jersey, who are undecided yet, and then Schuylkill County, who we don't know about yet as well.
And finally, what is the deferral payment that we are, a principal that we're talking about?
I asked DCD for that and didn't get an exact figure. They were only able to tell me that it is a $324,000. They were only able to tell me that it is a $324,000 annual payment, some portion of which is principal, a small portion of which is interest. And then, Commissioner Litz was correct, that the deferred principal will be refinanced and spread out over the remaining term of the loan.
Very good. All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Back to you.
All right, Commissioners, I just have one additional item to present, and that being the disabled veteran real estate exemption requests. And I've got six of those to present that were forwarded by Dan Seaman in assessment, John Padda of Hess Drive, Lebanon, Jane Ward of Maple Street, Lebanon, Beverly Helt of Walnut Crest Drive, Lebanon, Charles Gress of North College Street, Myerstown, Christopher Noble, Twin Creeks Drive, Jonestown, and Christopher McCarrick, Tunnel Hill Road, Lebanon, all who've met the requirements for the eligibility in the program.
I'll make a motion to grant a tax exemption to the veterans as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to exempt those property taxes for disabled veterans. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
The only other thing I might add is just to follow up on, on last week's meeting and talk about the, the status of the county offices and taking appointments. There've been quite a number of those that have been scheduled, and any began already on Monday. Everything seems to be going smoothly in terms of entry to the municipal building, and, you know, a lot of the offices are getting along just fine that way, and still, still maintaining some of the previous ways of doing business that have come to work for them. So, yeah, it's going, it's going, it's going well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I had forwarded to my fellow Commissioners and to Jamie a request from Larry Bowman to kind of extend the, the grant that we gave for feeding the frontliners. And I think all the specific information in there about who was served and what restaurants were used and so on was included. And first of all, would like to thank and congratulate Larry and all the agencies that work with him to, to feed the, the frontliners. They feel that, at this point, the 25,000 that we gave from the Hotel Tax Fund that we administer for grants was, has served very well, and they have some folks on their list that they would like to continue that program and are requesting $5,000 additional. And I would like to make a motion that we grant that. He said that they may not use it all. If they don't, of course, they'll be returning the unused portion, but I would request that we, we grant that request.
I'll second the motion, but how much have they spent? I see a wonderful summary of where the meals have been purchased and to whom they've been delivered, but I see nothing about finances in the report that was forwarded. Where do they say that?
My understanding is that they spent, or they are about to expend the 25,000 that we gave them previously.
It would be nice to have the financials as well.
Any further discussion? I'm sure that the financials will follow. I'm just glad they're taking care of, folks that they're taking care of, and especially the restaurants and the establishments that are being supported by this, because they're trying to get through a very tough patch right now. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain the vote. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered. I just, you know, want to add one thing, because Memorial Day coming up, and we talked a little bit about the flags, but I will tell you, the one person that probably is the super patriot in all this is Bonnie Loy. You know, she came up with the idea of revisiting this, because originally, we were not going to be getting these flags till after July 4th, and missing some very important, you know, events and timeframes for veterans and their families to be acknowledged. And so Bonnie stepped up, and then Scott Core found out that we could get a different grade, which we're going to have to deal with. But this all happened in about two days, two, two, three days. So hats off to them for stepping up in this very difficult time to make something happen, which is very important to many Lebanon Countyans. And so I just tip of the hat to, to them for their work.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Okay, other than that, anything else from the floor?
Any raised hands at all, or?
No raised hands.
Okay, then I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, folks, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance and for your input.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.